Sisters and brothers, we will begin today's session reading from the Gospel of Matthew. We'll take a text from Matthew chapter 16 verse 21, Matthew 16 verse 21 to verse 23. Matthew 16, 21 to 23. That will be the basis for our prayer. So let us begin as we always do in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. "From that time on, Jesus began to show his disciples that he must go to Jerusalem and suffer greatly from the elders, the chief priests, and the scribes, and be killed; and on the third day be raised. Then Peter took him aside and began to rebuke him. 'God forbid, Lord, no such thing shall ever happen to you.' He turned and said to Peter, 'Get behind me, Satan. You are an obstacle to me. You are thinking not as God does, but as human beings do." Oh Lord, thank you for gathering us once again, and thank you for making us followers of Jesus Christ. As we gather to continue to delve into his teachings for us, help us to understand what we discuss this evening, and give us the courage, oh Lord, to follow in his footsteps and not be obstacles to the word and the sacrament, the freedom and the salvation that he brought to the world. May we cooperate with Jesus, may we cooperate with the Holy Spirit, so that the work of Jesus may be felt in our world. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. So today, we will bring our discussions to a close, and we will break for a few weeks and then come back again after Easter on April 22nd. We will come back on April 22nd. But we will bring this first antithesis teachings of Jesus Christ to a close. This is the first set of his antithesis, where he compares the teachings in the old law or in the old relationship, how to relate with God, with the new relationship, how to, the new way to relate with God and with neighbor that he has brought. Jesus is making comparison, that's why this is called an antithesis, thesis with a plural, with an E, not I. So he compares two theses, and compares the old to the new. And it's basically, we have been saying that all these should be put, as we are looking at it, we should put it in a context of Jesus coming to fulfill the law. And especially when we are reading from Matthew, we have to say something about Matthew before we continue talking about some of the teachings, the teachings we are going to look at today. I want to say something about Matthew. The Gospel of Matthew was written, the audience is not the same audience that Luke wrote his Gospel for. Matthew wrote his Gospel, the Gospel of Matthew was written to an audience that is completely Jewish. They were Jewish people. And they were Jewish people who are contemplating and trying to find out who Jesus, whether Jesus is legit, whether Jesus is really legitimate king of Israel, whether he is the Messiah. And this is some of the Jewish people who became Christians. So Matthew had to be very, very careful how he interpreted or how he cast Jesus talking about the Old Testament. He has to be very careful, that is why some of the things don't look like Jesus is answering our questions for today, because he was not answering the question to us today. He was answering the question to the people in his day, the Jewish people. I will give you an example of what is, what can, what situation Matthew's Jesus found himself in. In the early, in the founding times, in the settlement times of the United States, when the United States was being settled by Europeans, especially the English, who came first and populated the Northeast. And then, when the first 13 states were together, when they called themselves the United States, the Irish came after. But the Irish were Catholics. The British were Protestants. So when the Irish came in, they were really not accepted. And one of the reasons why they were not wholly accepted was because of their Catholicism. Because the Protestants, having run away from a tyrant king in England, they ran away from a tyrant king, and the Revolutionary War was fought to break the ties between those who settled here and the king. They had nothing to do with the monarchy anymore. When they saw the Catholics, the Irish Catholics who were coming here, they were like, "Oh no, we are not going to have another foreign king ruling us," because they believed that the Irish are going to make the Pope take control over the United States. So the Irish had to prove, they had to actually, the church bishops actually had to promise, promise the union that the Pope is not going to make decisions for the United States. Before they could be giving that hospitality and... But a lot of, the Irish were persecuted a little bit. They were, they were really not accepted. There was, there's a whole lot of stories that show how the Irish were treated. And then Italians and all, all these people were treated that way because of the fact that they also have allegiance to a foreign leader, who's the Pope. So they would be taking instruction, and that went wrong, that has not even died off yet. You can remember what was happening, what happened to JFK. I mean, you guys know that very well. People tell you, JFK had to say that he does not take instructions from the Pope. He had to say that in order to get some Americans to vote for him. Many people were afraid that he's going to let the Pope take over. And that happened to every Catholic president in the United States. So that is the kind of situation that we, that we are talking about in Matthew, in the Gospel of Matthew. Matthew is a Jew himself, and he is writing to the Jewish people to let them know that Jesus Christ is legitimate, that they can, they will be okay when they observe Jesus. So now, he had to, he's taking the laws of the Jewish people and trying to explain them and say, "Jesus, oh no, Jesus is not abolishing the law." He is only fulfilling it, he's making it, he's bringing the best out of the old law. So that is how we should understand these things. If none of, if some of them do not satisfy your virtues or your Christian virtues, it is not because Jesus actually taught that, it is Matthew who is saying that Jesus taught that. Because Matthew's Jesus will not infringe on the old law. He is not abolishing it, he is fulfilling it. Which means that he is going to show them what the Torah, the Torah's goal is, how to really reach the Torah's potential. And by that, he gives them the Christian understanding of the law. He gives them a new law. But the new law, he says, is not, is not rendering the old law useless. No. That is not the context that we are... So we're going to continue to talk about this. I remember that when we talked about divorce, when we talked about divorce and remarried, I mean, some of those answers, even the New Testament understanding of it was not entirely, entirely a solution to marriage problems of our day in our church. We have done theology about these things and made them acceptable today. So let's continue, we are still going on. Today, we are going to talk about Jesus's teaching on false swearing. In the Bible, it's called swearing, but it's the same thing as oath, taking an oath or witnessing. Somehow, it is linked to witnessing, calling into evidence, calling something to testify, to solidify your point. And so Jesus is teaching about that. And then, we'll talk about retaliation. What is Jesus's teaching about retaliation or revenge? What are we to do with that as Christians? Or in the New Testament, what is that, what is the, what is the way we should treat that thing? Somebody does something bad against you, what do you do as a Christian or as somebody living in the New Testament way? And then the third thing we are going to consider is on enemies, on love, on love of enemies. Or what do we do with our enemies? How do we treat our enemies? So these are the things that we are going to talk about. At the end, I will, I will like to make a little comparison, not comparison, but relate what we are learning today and some of the things we have learned already to the celebration we are about to enter into. Easter, the Pascha, what we call the Pascha. The Pascha, Easter is our Pascha. And I'll tell you what that means as you go forward. So let's look at about false witnesses, false oath, or false swearing. Now, this is found in Matthew chapter 5, verse 33 to 37. And first of all, I want to say right from the, on the go, swearing here is not about, is not talking about using bad language. That is not what this swearing is. I know we use the word swear for people using bad language, but that is not what this is. This is, this is more about swearing here is calling into witness, giving evidence, calling into witness or evidence or testimony. Which means you, you want to, you say something and you say, "As God is my witness." You're calling God to be your witness. Jesus has a teaching about that. Why you cannot do that according to Jesus, we'll see what that is. Because if you call God as your witness, I mean, God knows so much about you that you don't know. So you're going to be in trouble if you call God to witness. And then, and then we'll see how Jesus teaches, and we'll see why he will tell us not to swear at all, not to call into evidence at all. So let us see, first of all, what he is trying to compare his teaching to. He's comparing his teaching to the Old Testament. Let us see what the Old Testament says about false swearing. It says, "You shall not falsely swear against your neighbor." And you can find that in Leviticus 19:12 in the Old Testament. You can find it in Exodus chapter 20, verse 16. That is found in the Ten Commandments. The beginning of the law in the Old Testament, in the introduction. And then you can find it in the second law, which we call detronomy. Detronomy is the second law, is Moses's summary of the law. So detronomy is the law. Detro is second, normos is law. So detronomy is second law. So we find it in detronomy, chapter 5, verse 20. So it is not to swear against your neighbor falsely, against your neighbor. But Jesus comes out and says, "But I say to you, no swearing at all." No swearing at all, that is, that is how you avoid the whole problem, avoid the problem from its roots. That is, if you don't swear at all, like I tell people about, when people tell me something about gossiping, when they come to confession and say, "Father, I gossiped," one of my advice is, try not to talk about anybody who is not in your company. Don't even say good things about anybody who is not there. Avoid talking about the person when the person is not there. Because if you start talking about the good things and the word "but" comes in, the rest is all bad. And you, the rest will all spoil the good things that you have said. So don't even talk about yourself. Learn to talk about yourself only when you are in a company or talk about people who are there. That avoids gossiping. Because once you start gossiping, the word gossip is, once you start talking, you cannot pull yourself out of it. It's over. Once you start talking and you cannot pull yourself out of the group that is talking about that person, and then you go deeper and deeper and deeper and deeper to the end. So we learn to talk about ourselves. That's the kind of thing that Jesus is teaching here and saying, "Don't even swear at all." And if you are not going to, if you are not going to call evidence to support something that you are saying, if you are not going to get evidence, then what are you to do? It says, "Do not even swear by heaven." Because heaven in the Bible, and many times in the Old Testament, heaven is used to represent God. So like if you say, "The kingdom of heaven is the same as the kingdom of God." So whenever you hear the word heaven, it symbolizes God too. So don't swear even by heaven. It says, "Don't swear by your head," because you didn't create it. You didn't create your head. So you have no idea how that head came to be. So you can't call your head into evidence or as a witness. Or any part of your body. The head that is being shown here is just an example. It stands for any part of your body. Actually, it stands for any creation. Because this is, this is, this is what God has created. So don't swear by these things at all, because none of these, you are, you cannot create any of these things. So you cannot, you cannot use them. They can testify to things that, that you, that is, yeah, you can account for. God knows more about you than you know. So if you call God to evidence and God, God will see some of the places that you don't know about yourself, and that destroys your argument. You can't have a perfect witness in God. So don't swear at all. That's Jesus's teaching. And it goes on, this is all about still false witness. So don't swear at all, what then should you do? When you find yourself in a situation where you have to be believed, where you have to, you have to, you have to say something that will, will, will have to do about your credibility. What do you do? So Jesus says, "Let your yes be yes, and your no be no." And what that means is that tell the truth, and that should be enough. Tell the truth, the truth does not need evidence. The truth testifies to itself. Truth makes itself, sells itself. So if you have the truth, no amount of testimony or evidence support truth. Evidence does not replace truth. When you have evidence, the evidence is not meant to make the truth, the truth true. The evidence is there to support, not to make the truth true. The truth must be true by itself. Truth exists by itself. Then the other supports are, they are just supports. But if you peel off the supports, the truth should be able to suffice, should be able to, if it is true. If it cannot suffice for itself, it is not true. It has a problem. So that is what Jesus is doing here. Make sure you come out open without anything, without the back door open, without the back door open. That is a kind of trust that Jesus is requiring from his followers. He's saying, "There shouldn't be any conspiracies." Conspiracies, you know, nothing, you're saying something right now, but there is a back door, something lurking behind the mind, "Oh, he should be doing, oh, he must be doing it, or she must be doing, or she must be doing that." Bring it to the open, discuss it. Bring whatever is in the... And this is very important for two people who are, for people who are going to marry, for instance, the guys who have been preparing for marriage. The program, the six months is meant to make sure that each of them tell each other what is in there right now, before they go in there and say, "I do, I do." If there's something in there in one's heart, and that is not declared, and they go to marry, and later on, that thing surfaces, and that makes their marriage, they separate, when they go for annulment, they will get it in a heartbeat. Because that hiding something and not declaring it before marriage, the other person marries under false pretense. Because if the other person knew that, he or she will not say, "I do." So she said, "I do," based on what was declared, thinking that that was everything. If there's the back door open, and that back door resurfaces later on, if the one who is helping the person to file for annulment, that is what the tribunal is looking for. They are looking for the ground for the annulment. They are looking for the ground that nullifies this marriage even at the time when it was being done. Because somebody was saying, "Yes, I do," based on false pretense. That already makes the marriage non-existent. We didn't know, but it's not existent. And so that's what Jesus is talking about, truth telling. Truth testifies to itself. Evidence only supports, but not make, truth true. So what Jesus is talking about here is, we shouldn't have conspiracies. We shouldn't be harboring things. We should say what is in our hearts as much as best as we can when we are talking, when we are sharing, when we are discussing. We should let our heart, our mouth, our words represent as close as possible to the best of our ability and knowledge what is in our hearts. They should match. What is, what we are thinking, they should match. That is, this is, this is about, when you're talking about false pretense, false witness. And that is how the new teaching, this teaching really deepens, because the old law says, "Don't swear against your neighbor." That is somebody who is your neighbor, in their sense, your neighbor is a fellow Jewish person. But Jesus expands it, expands that, and says, "No, no false swearing at all." No false swearing at all, and then, and so he makes the target a bigger target. So then, the next one is about retaliation. What do we do with that? Somebody does something very, very bad, very, very bad to you, what do you do with that? In the old law, in the Old Testament, Moses gave them the law. There is "eye for an eye." The rule of Talion means a proportional revenge was allowed. Like proportional, you do something to me, you get the same back. If it is evil, you get evil back. And in the same measure. But I want to remind you that this is Matthew again. This is Matthew talking. This is Matthew talking and saying, "This is what Jesus..." This is not the law from Jesus himself, but this is what Jesus is saying the Old Testament taught, that violence for violence. But violence for violence cannot be found in the Old Testament. We can't find that. But this is what Jesus quoted. He quoted from Exodus chapter 21, verse 24, Leviticus 24:20, and Detronomy 19:21. You know, these three books are the books where you find law actually in, the laws of Israel. Exodus, Leviticus, and Detronomy. So this is the old law, equality in crime and punishment. Equality of crime and punishment. Now this is what Jesus is teaching. Jesus says that one should not resist an evil doer. Now, this is, this should be understood a little bit. We should talk a little bit about this. Which means, resistance, this is equal to the resistance against civil and political methods and interpersonal relations. Not to resist here, he is actually teaching them not to adopt how it takes place in the political and civil arena. He's talking about, in general, Satan must be resisted. When you find evil, you have to resist Satan. But in matters of individual, personal relationships, you have to adopt a higher ground. Let's delve a little bit into that. So how are you supposed to relate? How are you supposed to deal with evil or wrongdoing coming to you? Jesus says, "Opt out of the process of violent revenge." So what he's actually talking about here is the method that, he's talking about the method by which you respond to an evil that came to you. That is the, that is the, do not resist the evil doer. Don't engage in the method Don't engage in the method of the evil doer. The, the same method that was visited upon you. That is the, that is the resistance that we get. Because there is no place in the Bible that, that people were not asked to resist Satan. I mean, there, there are so many places where people are asked to resist Satan. Therefore, we have to interpret this not to resist an evil doer as our participation in the evil doing itself as a revenge to what was done to us. And he goes on to deepen that and says, so the right cheek. So he began, he began to use examples. So the right cheek, the right cheek can be found in Luke, chapter 6, verse 21, too. In Luke, chapter 6, verse 29, Luke says, the other cheek. Matthew says, the right cheek. Matthew specify which cheek we are talking about here, okay. But all of them have a reason for using what the, the, the kind of cheek they are talking about. Matthew is using right cheek as the right way, the right response. The better response, or not the wrong response, but the right response. Okay. That's why he uses right cheek. Luke uses the other cheek because, because when, he says, when they slap you in, on this cheek, on one cheek, turn the other cheek. The other cheek is the place that was not hit. The place that was hit becomes a violent place. That is a violent spot because it was tried. So it is disturbed, that is the disturbed part, that is the red hot part. And that part would like to punch back the same. Bringing the same, responding to the same violence with the same violence. Turning the same cheek will be turning the violent cheek, the place that has been violated. So the other cheek is the opposite, is the cooler cheek, is the, is the subtle, is the calm cheek. And so turning the cheek is just an, an expression, an idiomatic expression or symbols to show that do not respond to violence with violence. Do not respond in the sense, and that goes back to the eye for an eye thing, that you do not respond to, to evil that comes to you with the same or even participate in the process of the evil itself, of the violent revenge. And, and it talks about other things. It says, other examples he uses there, when some, when you borrow from somebody, make sure you return, make sure you return before, before sunset, make sure you return it to the person because that's the only thing the person relies on. When a person borrows it to you, the person has become poor. I mean, the person has lost something, giving you something. So you must respond with goodness, kindness. You also have to be kind in a way. Actually, this also is saying that, is saying at the same time, when something good is done to you, do more good. Okay. So it, they all go together. Don't respond to violence with violence, but respond to good with something more than the good that was done to you. So this is, this is, they, they both go to that, what it has to do with good and evil. Okay. So somebody presses you into service. This is, this is the kind of pressing people into service was done by the Roman soldiers in those days. They can, you can be walking on the street, they can just catch you and put you in the mines to work for one hour before they release you. They, just at random, they were doing that. You remember Simon of Cyrene was walking about, was one of the crowd. Jesus was carrying his cross, he was going to be killed. A criminal was going to be killed and, and fell and could not wake up and was tired. And what did they do? They just got somebody from the crowd to carry the cross to the, to the, to the, to the end. Okay. They do that all the time. They press people into service. Jesus says, when they press you into service, into service for one mile, go two miles. Okay. Press you into service of doing something. It might be something good that they are trying to do, but forcing another person to do it is, is, is terrorism, right? But Jesus asks us, if the thing is a good thing, then go a bit more. And giving also, then he talks about giving. Give and give and give and give, and you will be given more than that. So in the end, the teaching about retaliation is to meet force and brutality with a bounding goodness. Find good, find good means. It doesn't say that you will not resist. When it has to do with the, the, the general, in a general scheme of things, like a whole nation, and things like that, you can respond or resist, but with goodness. The methods you use are not going to be the same method that came to you. You're going to use a good method to respond. And that's, that's the teaching about retaliation. And then the next one is about enemies. Now, in the old law, Moses defined the teaching. The teaching that they find in the old law is to love your neighbor. And the quote in, in Matthew's, in, in verse 47, 48 is, to, to love your, love your neighbor and hate your enemy. Now, this is what Matthew says. But we can't find hate your enemy in any of the Jewish laws. There's nothing like that, I say hate your enemy expressly like that. It was coined from, it was implied in some of the, some of the other laws. But there's no hate expressly hate your enemy in there. But Matthew says, in the old law, that is what you find. If you read Leviticus, chapter 19, verse 18, with the quoting, they don't have hate your enemy over there. So, so we have to keep that in mind as we are explaining this. There is no explicit Old Testament commandment to hate one's enemy. But Jesus teaches that love your enemies. And it sounds like he's abrogating, it sounds like that is abrogating the old object of love. He is not abrogating the entire law of love your neighbor. Love your neighbor still is good. But Jesus says, do not love only your neighbor. So Jesus expands the object of love. Makes the object of love everybody. Everybody. Your, the, the ones you love should not be only your relatives. Jesus, the Christian law is actually in theology, this is, in theology, this is what we, we, we have come up with, with this teaching. Your family is there as, as a help. Your relatives are there as help. So that you have people right under your roof, right on, in your family. You have people that you can practice how to love humanity with. So they are there for practice. Your, your spouses are there for practice. They're, whether we like it or not, we are all individuals. So how you love your spouse should move, should let you make it possible for you to love your children. Should make it possible for you to love other human beings. So you, so when you're loving your, your, your relatives, it should not be, I'm loving you because you do something for me. That's how we do it. But Jesus is calling us to a higher love, a love that is unconditional. Because that's the way God loves us, okay. A higher that is unconditional. So how are we going to do that? So we look at the humanity of our spouses, our family members, our relatives. That I love you first of all because you're a human being. God created you. If you're a human being, God created you. Okay. So, so that is number one. I mean, I think that that is the first thing we looked at when we were going to marry. I'm talking like I'm, I've been married before. No, I'm not. But, but some people have told me this. Some married couples have reflected this to me, so that's why I'm saying it. It's like, when I first found you, you, I, I was looking for a human being first, okay. I was looking for a human being. That's the first thing you're looking for before any, every other thing, okay. It should be a, for the first thing should be a human being. And then other things, race, color, whatever, hairstyle, oh, yeah, everything, beauty, whatever. Your, your, your knowledge and all that comes. They all are secondary to the humanness. Because remember, human beings are created in the image and likeness of God. So when you are looking for the human, you're actually looking for God in that person. And, and that will make you practice, practice how to love human beings. By loving your spouse unconditionally, you can love your children unconditionally. You can then begin to, if it's on a human level, you can transcend to, you can widen the object of your love. So, so why should we do that? Anyway, why, 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 why should, why should Christians love like this? Why, why should Christians try to love unconditionally? And so Jesus goes on, Matthew goes on to explain Jesus' motivation. The motive, why should we do that? Why should you love unconditionally? The first motive is that so we can be like our Creator, children of God. Because that's the way God loves. That is God's love. Agape is, is that love, the highest form of love, the love that is not based on even what you do. I love you anyway because you're a human being. A human being means therefore it's wider than, than any particular thing. Okay. So you can be, people can come and get you. They say you are this and that and that and that, and put you in jail. I still love you. Okay. You have done this and that. I don't like what you just did over there. You don't like what you're doing there, but I love you. I, I still can come around you and talk with you. I still can continue. I don't agree with you about this and that and that and that, but I can still love you. That is an unconditional love. That's what we forge, also we try to forge in our Christian community, in our little small groups, in our little, whatever we are doing out there, that we can, we can look at the humanity of people and associate with them and not look at just the disagreements we have with them. Okay. So that's very important here. So children of God is the motive why we should love unconditionally. The second, second one is that loving unconditionally, unconditionally is a superior righteousness and is above those of tax collectors and Gentiles. Because any other form of love, people that are considered sin, do, do that. Everybody, even the, the, the big drug dealers who are being, who catch people, kill people and other, they love their children. Okay. They keep their children, okay. And go and slaughter other people's children and use them and use people and use women and, and all that. But, but you go touch their wife and you are in trouble. But they are going along violating, raping other people's children. But their children will not be touched because they love their children. They love their relatives, they love their family very much. That's, that's the kind of thing here. That, that standard is very low. That's the Greek, the Greeks, that's why the Greeks have all these words for love. All of them are lower. The love that is based on family. They have love that is based on sexuality, sexual pleasure. They have love that, and, and part of this is what has become, people talk about making love as love. That could be, but that is not, that is a low bar. That is erotic love is a low, is very low. There are higher forms of love. Erotic love is need love. I need something and you satisfy my need and so, so that's love. That's, there's higher, where there is no gain at all and you still, you still give out there. That, that's superior. Yeah. So tax collectors, they use tax collectors and Gentiles as people who, who are not part of the community. But Jesus was using that as, just as an example. People who don't know Jesus still practice love, but in a lower form. So Christian love has to go beyond that, has to go beyond that. The third motivation is that Jesus says, be perfect as your heavenly Father is perfect. Now perfection, in Luke, it says, be merciful. It doesn't use perfect. Only Matthew uses perfect. Luke uses, be merciful as your heavenly Father is merciful. But more than likely, this links to, is understood as God's holiness. Because in the Old Testament, they don't speak much about perfection of God. They speak about God's holiness. And you can find that in Leviticus, chapter 19, verse 2. And God's holiness has to do with God's perfection and has to do with God's wholeness, wholeness. Now, if God is doing something for you, he will not do just your, your hand or do your leg. God restores you wholly. And so if God is going to love us, the love that God has for the world is not segmented. It's not, it's not like, oh, God loves these people and God doesn't love the other people. No. God loves every human being. God does not just love only Christians. If they are human, you can bet on that. God loves them. So that is why Christians, many Christians got it wrong when they think like, oh, we are the only ones and God, oh, it's all, no. Muslim, Hindu, whatever, whoever is out there. We have learned better through the Second Vatican Council. There is, there is the teaching of the Second Vatican Council about other religions. It's expressed in an encyclical called Nostra Etate, Nostra Etate. I think our, our other brothers and sisters, something like that. That's what it means. But that document talks about Christian attitudes towards other religion, other people, people of other religions. That Christians should change course, that we're changing course. This has not been taught enough in the church. And so many people, but we have been dialoguing with Muslims, Hindus. We have been doing that since the Second Vatican Council. But everything has been just left to the graduate theological schools only. You can find it in the academy only. They have not trickled down to the parishes. Because you have some bishops like, oh, no, 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 I'm not going to touch that. Oh, I want to be an archbishop, you know. So people, people are playing it safe there. And, and there are people in the parishes who don't know much. The only thing they know is what, what they know from pre-Vatican II. And they are the people who are terrorizing priests in the parish. Like, father, you know, father, father. So people, they're, they're So people, there, there are priests who are not teaching that, who are not telling the community anything about other religions and our relationship and how we, we have been, the, the gains we have made with inter-religious dialogue. Here in this parish, in, in, in our parish, we have a ministry like that. But it has not been, we have not really worked with it. I think this is what, what I want to do, is to bring the parish to, to embrace this ministry. The interfaith, uh, uh, interconnect. Uh, I've been going to some of the meetings with other pastors in this area and the rabbis and the imams of this area and the other, uh, uh, churches. And it's, it's really, it's great and I have friends among them. And we could come together to deal with issues like, issues that we all agree in, the areas that we agree on, like, like violence or gun violence, which is the one that is up now, now we are talking about. We can all come together and begin to, to, to look at how, how we can deal with this, how we can help, uh, to, uh, to let our Christian faith respond to something like that. Everyone agrees on that one, on, on the approach to that. So, so this is very important that God's love, uh, uh, had to go to everyone. Uh, and so God is a, his, God's caring is for all, not for some. That is something that should be in the mind of every Christian, that the Christian love is a holistic love. Its object, the Christian love object is humanity itself, not just for, for, uh, a little segment of, of, of people. That is the perfection that we have been called to. And you can see that Paul, the theologian, Paul is a theologian who reflected on these, on the, on, on the test, on, on Jesus's life and teachings. He wrote that famous, uh, that famous, uh, text about love in First Corinthians, chapter thirteen, which married couples love very much. Uh, you go to marriage celebrations, oh, you, you will find this as the second reading. I bet you that. If I have money, if I have this and I have no love, I am nothing. Love is this, love is that, love is that, love is that. Love is not jealous, love does not gossip, love is all kinds of things. And he concludes very nicely. That is a, that is a litany of love in the Bible. So, uh, uh, that's, that's, that's how we are to approach the so-called enemies, right? Someone told me that the enemy of my enemy is myself. So, so the enemy of my enemy, if you make an enemy, well, you have become an enemy to that one too. So you are also an enemy. So, so, uh, uh, no enemies, but we have a way to, 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 to relate with our fellow human beings. Now, uh, now this last, uh, uh, thing is to compare what we are saying right now. It is interesting now we ended with love and a perfect love. That's exactly what Jesus came to teach. That's exactly why the word became flesh today, uh, uh, March twenty-fifth. We celebrated the annunciation that God is coming to this world. That was the reason why. The reason is to teach the world what perfect love looks like. So that the world can be that good as it was created, as God created it to be, it was good, right? So, so, uh, Jesus's birth, which we celebrated in Christmas, was for that purpose. So he will live among us, God will live among us. And then through us, God will show us, uh, uh, how to love one another. So, uh, the, the antithesis is the fulfill, fulfilling teachings. They are the fulfilling teachings of Christ, the perfection of our relationship with God and with creation, including our fellow human beings. How to live with God and how to live with our fellow human beings. That's what the antithesis were, are teaching. And then, uh, the old relationship, the old way that people related with God is what is, what is celebrated in the Jewish community. The Israelites began celebrating that in Egypt, okay? Their Passover, what they call Pascha. Pascha, the word Pascha is a, it comes from a Hebrew word that means to hop over, jump, to jump over, to jump over. And in Greek, it was translated as pass over, to pass over. Now that action was a way of sparing whatever you are jumping over, okay? If you, if you are going to bulldoze your way through anything, you, you hurt it, you harm it. But if you jump over it, you spare it. That's the saving action. That is how the Israelites were saved in Egypt. When the angel of, 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 of God went through Egypt and was going into the Egyptian homes, but the Israelites were told to smear their doorposts with blood of a lamb or goat or sheep that they killed. They smeared their doorposts with the blood, with that blood of the lamb, a lamb that they slaughtered to eat. And it says, when the angel, because that time the angel is going to visit, the angel is going to take the firstborn sons in the families. The angel is going to take them, they're going to die. Any home that that angel enters is going to take the firstborn son. So this is the day that you don't want an angel in your house. You don't want an angel in your house at that night. So what will you do for the angel not to come into your house? Smear your doorposts with the blood of the lamb. And the Bible says, when I see the blood, I will pass over you. So that was how they were saved. That is what they began to celebrate that day when they, when, when they were saved. The blood on the doorposts saved them, okay? But that blood was the blood of a lamb or sheep or goat, okay? So God's action was going over them. That's how we got this word Passover, the Passover feast. It is, it is, and it became, it became the independent celebration of Israel. This is the independence, their independence celebration is that they were liberated from Egypt and became people and they went all over to the promised land, okay? So that's salvation of God, God saving them. In the New Testament, Jesus made himself the lamb that was killed. The lamb whose blood we should smear on ourselves. So that when we do something wrong, God looks at, the blood of Christ covers us. We eat the blood and drink the cup. The cup is that blood that covers us, okay? So that covering us, God looks at the blood and, and continues to love us, okay? God looks at that and forgives us again and again and again and again, forgives us. So that's the, the new covenant in a new relationship. It just means that the way we relate with God is no more than the old way, but we relate with God with Jesus's way. Because we cover ourselves with the blood of Jesus means you love God and love your neighbor as Jesus loves you. So what is the link? The link is what we are going to celebrate in these three days that are coming. Holy Thursday, Good Friday, Holy Saturday. That's the Pascha, Christian Pascha, the pre-Christian Passover. We celebrate that every year and we celebrate that every time in the Mass. Every Mass is a celebration of the Pascha, okay? How God saved us, God, how God passed over us, how God forgives our sins, how God, uh, uh, gives us new life. So we're going to celebrate that. And when we begin on Holy Thursday, for instance, Holy Thursday, we are going to celebrate exactly that when Jesus says, I give you a new commandment. Love one another as I have loved you. My way, the way I love is what I want you to love, okay? That's, that's what we're going to start with. We're going to begin the three-day celebrations with Holy Thursday. And right there, it tells us the agenda, uh, uh, is loving as Jesus loves. So that's the salvation that, that, of God's action plus human participation. We are called upon to be part of it. So these antithesis that we are learning have close relationship with the entire, uh, uh, celebration that we are about to have. When we come back from our, from Easter, we will continue and finish with, uh, uh, the Sermon on the Mount. And then, uh, we will get to the end of the gospel, gospels and, and finish with the Jesus's teachings. Do we have questions?
Um, there's a couple of comments, but, um, there's a question. I'll show you, the hell I can't read them.
Okay, God made, oh.
Oh, this, one person says, God made all this, so God loves all of us. And then Karen Haley Allen from Maui says, blessings to you during this wonderful season. Three years ago, during Triduum, she accepted the sacrament of confirmation in the church. She's blessed and grateful to be a Roman Catholic.
Oh, okay. Somebody is saying he, she is blessed, she is very happy to be a Roman Catholic. Ah, ah, okay, all right, okay, well, that's very good, that's very good. Yes, yes, yes. So I, I think there's no more, uh, no, uh, questions and no other comments. We will revisit some of these things afterwards and talk about some of our questions, what the church has done with these scripture texts and, and how we actually live it in our day, concretely in our practices. So God bless all of you. I look forward to seeing you at the, at the, uh, Triduum, the three days especially. For those of us who understand this very well, you have to participate in the three services because they are all one celebration. Holy Thursday evening, Good Friday, uh, three o'clock, and Holy Saturday evening. These are the key ones. But the priest, the church and the priests and the nuns and the deacons pray, uh, uh, this, the Psalms. Every morning, there is no mass in the mornings of the three days, but there is always morning prayer and they are the prayers of the, of the church. I want you to remember that the rosary came from the prayer of the Psalms. It was these prayers that was prayed before by the people, the peasants could not read. So the monks made beads, repetitive prayers for them. That is how, how the, the rosary came about. But it was the Psalms that they wanted to pray. So, uh, come and let us see how we can practice this and make it, uh, make it inspiring, okay? So God bless you, have a, have a, have a happy Easter, everybody.